Have you seen my phone?
Having a good week, Clark? Have a good week?
Yeah.
It's been a good week.
Sure.
Seven days. Last seven days.
Take seven days.
Fine as a week. It was up and down. Worked at the house all weekend. Didn't even seem like a weekend. Did a bunch of cooking this weekend.
It's seven o'clock. Convene the regular session of the council. First item of business, the notification given by Deputy Mayor Protem Vaughn and pledge to the U.S. and Texas flags by Councilman Guarina.
Please stand and join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And next item is presentation, and that's going to be postponed until a later meeting. Item D, visitor citizen forum. I don't have any cards filled out. Does anybody have any on this one? Next item, E, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so request. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I don't have any cards filled out. Councilman Guarina?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now to F, regular hearings, number three, consideration of a variance to the Louisville City Code relating to Chapter Six, off-street parking requirements associated with the proposed Pine Prairie apartment site located at the south of Lake Ridge Road between East Hill Park Road and Leora Lane as requested by developer Westwood Residential. Comments, Westwood Residential is proposing a 590-unit apartment complex. An engineering site plan has been submitted for staff review, which includes the requested variance to allow a reduction in required parking from two spaces per unit to approximately 1.686 spaces per unit, resulting in a net difference of 185 parking spaces. The recommendation of staff is that the council consider the variance request as set forth in the caption above, provided that Westwood Residential file a deed restriction prohibiting unauthorized parking of additional cars, boats, recreational vehicles, et cetera, as outlined in their September 12 letter. I have one speaker here, Mr. Jeff Lindsey. Come up for him. You would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Jeff Lindsey, 3195 Parkwood Boulevard, Frisco, Texas. Westwood Residential is currently working on a multifamily development that will contain two phases near State Highway 121 in Leora and Louisville. The initial phase will consist of 300 apartment homes that will provide high-quality housing for existing and future residents. We are currently in the plan submission process with the city, and we'd like to request the parking variance that has already been addressed. And the primary reason for this variance is based upon a unit mix that has a higher concentration of one-bedroom apartments than you would typically see being developed today and in the past. We will have 70% one-bedrooms in Phase One. This is two phases, by the way. I know the aggregate number of units were referenced, 300 in the first one, 290 in the second. 70% in Phase One, 73% in Phase Two. Now, Westwood recognizes the importance of policing parking at our properties to control potential overcrowding that can occur through the unauthorized parking of boats, trailers, recreational vehicles, et cetera. For this reason, our onsite staff walk the properties daily. They flag any unauthorized vehicles, and it's our standard policy to notify the owners. They have 24 hours to get the vehicle off-site, and if they don't, then we tell them. To ensure that parking remains a non-issue at these properties going forward, as you have previously mentioned, we'd like to propose the addition of a deed restriction that would prohibit the parking of these additional vehicles. We have an, our attorney is drafting the language for this deed restriction, and this would be submitted to the city for your comments and approval. One thing that needs to be noted here is the level of quality that is being proposed by Westwood for this development. This is not just another garden apartment property that's going to have 18 buildings out there, standard three-story construction. As the submittals illustrate, and I don't know if you all have those, or, okay, what we have is a new generation of product that is a combination between high-density urban-type development and garden product. It's three-story construction, but if you'll notice, the building configurations, the exterior elevations, the central courtyards, it provides the appearance of a high-density urban-type development in a suburban setting. The exterior of the properties will be primarily constructed, excuse me, out of stone. The entrance to the property includes the addition of a pocket park for our residents. This is adding green space to the property. That, in conjunction with a resort-style pool that we will deliver, I don't know if any of you have seen the adjacent property that we developed, Bella Madera, I mean, we put a lot of money into these pool areas. We want to create a very resort-style pool, and these will deliver unique amenities that simply are not available in the area. This variance request is consistent with what city council previously approved on our adjacent development known as Bella Madera. That property was built in one phase. It consists of 612 units, was completed in 2008 with a similar high concentration of one-bedroom units. To date, there have not been any parking issues or complaints associated with this property. Finally, we've developed this unit mix and parking ratio previously in Louisville, Dallas, Frisco, Austin, Houston, and San Antonio over the past 15 years, and it has worked successfully due to two things. One, the higher concentration of ones simply does not require as many parking spaces. And two, active property management polices this to make sure that it's enforced. How we came up with our calculations, and I know you heard the overall ratio, but what we've applied is one and a half spaces for one-bedrooms, two spaces for twos. With that, thank you for your time, and if I can answer any questions about the proposed developments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Anybody have any questions at this time?
Yes, I'd like to ask, what is your, what are you considering for the three-bedroom apartments that you have in your plan as far as parking?
Two parking spaces.
Two parking spaces.
Sure. There's only six three-bedrooms, so.
Yeah, yes, I understand that. And two bedrooms, and for the two bedrooms, two parking spaces?
Two parking spaces.
And what about the visitor, visitor parking?
The parket, the mix that has been outlined in the ratios, it has not presented any problems at the properties that we have. There's ample, there's adequate parking. It's not been an issue.
I can understand that most apartments may only have two adults in there, you know, a couple have his and her car and stuff. But if you have this many one-bedrooms, who's to say that majority of them won't be couples and everybody needs to have their two cars parked everywhere? There's a reason why we had this formula done way back when here, and so I'm a little concerned that we're going to so few, 185 less parking spaces than would have been required from our formula that our city's been using. Our city manager does assure me, us, that there's not, shouldn't be a problem, as far as he knows, shouldn't be a problem. Is that?
Well, I think, you know, you can always make some assumptions about what your actual demographic mix is going to be on those units. If every single-bedroom unit was occupied by two people and each of them had a car, then it would probably be underparked, but that's a big if.
Yes.
So, we'd go.
Also, if I may, one of the things that we do is, we market specifically because of this unit mix, we market to young, single professionals. And I can't quantify that that's the only, you know, individual that will ever live there, but if you look at the demographic mix at Bella Madera, for example, you will find a high concentration of single people. And the fact of the matter is, as soon as everybody can, they want to get out, they want to be on their own, you know? With harder economic times than we had previously, you did have people that had to double up, but they don't typically go to one-bedrooms, they typically go to two-bedrooms.
Yeah, if they get a roommate, yes. All right. No, I'm going to go with the city manager's recommendation. Thanks you guys have it handled, so I just, I'm a little leery about going back on what was created as a rule of thumb to avoid other problems that have been happening, you know, in other areas.
I understand that, and hopefully, as we've chatted with the city manager and the director of development, the addition of a deed restriction eliminates a big factor that happens, especially as properties age, where you start having additional RVs, trailers, boats, so on and so forth.
Is that really happening in a lot of apartment, I mean, I go to apartment complexes all the time for what I'm doing, I don't see trailers and boats.
Absolutely. If it's not policed, it can be very problematic. Now, at Bella Madera, the property that we have adjacent to this, because it's that close to the lake, we had people asking about this, and we had ample parking, and we actually at that property carved out 10 spaces back in a corner that nobody ever parked in. And we designated those 10 spaces only for this type of parking.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other question? Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, Councilman Gilmore, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Councilor. Item number four, consideration of a final plat for FOPIN Louisville Edition, a 1.57-acre parcel zoned light industrial located at the southwest quadrant of Midway Road West and Hoffers Prairie Road with a requested variance to the Louisville City Code, Section 6-92B paving as requested by Bill Foose, the owner. Mr. Foose, we had a request from staff to table this. Do you still wish to speak, or do you disagree with the tabling?
Well, yeah.
Come on forward, Bill.
Hi, my name's Bill Foose, 3129 Hanover, Dallas, Texas. Yeah, I know the reason it was asked, I mean, I sent a letter up here that an attorney, I had an attorney look at this just because it was such a large amount of money relative to this tract that I just had him look at it to, it looked like it just, it just didn't feel right that it was, it could be this large. Anyway, he kind of, he didn't write an opinion letter, but he just reviewed it for me, and I sent that to David, and I hope he submitted it to everyone here, but not that you've had time to read it, but we're being asked, we've got a, before you, our request is to approve the plat, 1.57 acres. We're dedicating 30 feet of right-of-way on Hoffers Prairie. We're dedicating, I think, 10 feet or 3,000 feet along Midway West. I mean, we're dedicating right now, I want to say it's about 12% of the property, far street right-of-way pursuant to the ordinance on the books. And we've asked for a waiver of $136,000 in escrow for the paving escrow. And we're basically asking for this waiver based on some previous plats that have been approved out there where the waiver has been granted. I think the plat on the northeast corner, if I'm not mistaken, behind the Fena Station, there's a vacant land, that whole tract, to my, I was told it was platted, and I don't think any escrow was required of that plat, nor do I think a couple of other tracts up and down Midway Road and Hoffers Prairie have had to put in escrow deposits, or escrow for the paving. So we're basically asking to be treated as those tracts, and in particular, not penalized by what amounts to about half of what this land's worth. So that's, that's what's before you today. Other plats have been approved with that similar request, or maybe it was a recommendation, but I don't know how the request came in on the northeast corner, whether the landowner requested it, or whether the staff just said, you know, we're not going to put the escrow on here. So we're basically, that's before you, the council, I mean, the staff recommended to the P&amp;Z, and the P&amp;Z approved it, where they would say, we will waive that, we will waive that escrow, which we appreciate, with one condition, that if you, if we sold this land to the adjacent tract or to a larger tract, and it entered into a new site plan or a new ownership with a larger tract, that that waiver would go away, and then we'd have to, then the new owner would have to deposit the 136,000. That, that's penalizing to us because the adjacent owner wants to buy this land. It's the auction company out there, and they, we've had it under contract to them to sell it to them, but with the uncertainty with the escrow, they've, they dropped their contract and said, you know, we're going to back off until this matter is resolved. Now, whether they'll come back or not, I can't, I have no guarantee that they will, but we were under contract for like 60 days with them to buy this parcel of land, but they have since dropped it. So it's the uncertainty of that. We would like to request the waiver from the council to establish the certainty on this lot, that it's 1.5 acres less the right-of-way that we're, that we are dedicating to the city, and we're asking for a waiver on the escrow.
Mr. Foose?
I'd be happy to answer your question.
Okay. Do you, do you disagree with the request to table?
Well, I mean, if, that's y'all's vote. I mean, I, we've been trying to plat this land for a couple of years, so we would like to move it forward. I'd certainly rather work on, I'd certainly, before the condition hits on the table, yes, I'd just soon table it.
Okay.
But I wouldn't mind a vote the way we've presented it too, with the, with that, with the waiver, but with no condition. I mean, I think that's what's on the table as far as, that's what our application, as it was filed, that's the plat application. The condition came from the P&amp;Z on staff recommendation.
Well, we'll see what the council's pleasure is here now.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Foose? Councilman Ferguson?
I guess at this point, I'd like to hear again from the city manager, what he feels like is the correct correction on this.
Before we do that, let me go and read the rest of the comments, since we're going to go in here. Administrative comments, the 1.57-acre property is unplatted and zoned light industrial. The owners are proposing to market the property for an industrial or commercial use and have no immediate plans, immediate plans to develop the site. The owners applied for variance to the GDO to waive the required street escrow for Midway Road and Hoffers Prairie Road. The owners feel the required escrow is not appropriate due to the small size of the property and property value. The P&amp;Z recommended approval of the final plat and variance conditionally per the staff recommendation at the September 4, 2012 P&amp;Z meeting, with James Davis and Brent Daniels casting the dissenting votes. The stated condition is that the variance will be voided in the event the subject lot is combined with adjacent property through ownership, plat, or site plan process. Recommendation is that the city council approve the final plat and variance for FOPIN Louisville Edition as set forth in the caption above, with the condition that the variance will be voided in the event the lot is combined with adjacent property through ownership, plat, or site plan. Okay. Staff?
Well, council, this is the, exactly the same type of variance that was approved for the southeast corner, so I'm not aware of any specific cases that Mr. Foose referenced about who may have been waived on prior escrows in the northeast corner. I do know that other properties have paid escrows, and the southeast corner was granted a variance like this conditioned upon whether or not it had been combined or would be combined with a larger tract. So that's the reason it was modeled this way. All that's made somewhat moot at this point by the letter that we received from Mr. Foose's attorney, which basically makes the argument that he just did, and whether or not the escrow is proportionate to the property is something that we'd have to look at a little bit further and possibly take back to the P&amp;Z if we felt like there was anything to that, and possibly negotiate further with Mr. Foose, because there's probably some number that is proportionate to the property. We just, he's, we think it's 136, and he thinks it's less. So with all of that in mind, and especially given the legal arguments made by his attorney that need to be evaluated by our own legal staff, I think we need to take it back to the drawing board and table this until we have a chance to evaluate that additional information and see what kind of alternatives can be developed, which would mean tabling it. And again, because P&amp;Z could be involved, we need to allow enough time for possibly scheduling another P&amp;Z meeting.
Second meeting in November would be plenty of time.
In that case, what I would do is make a motion that we table this item until the regular council meeting on November 19, 2012.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Guarina, to table to the second meeting in November. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So the second meeting in November. Item number five, consideration of an ordinance amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule. Comments, as part of the annual budget process, council approved changes to the fee schedule that were based on analysis of current charges as compared to cost-recovery goals, authorized charges that may no longer be applicable, and new fees. Recommendation is that the city council approve an ordinance amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a rec, I make, I make a motion that the council approve an ordinance amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section 2-201 as stated above. Second.
Okay. We have a motion by the mayor, Deputy Mayor Protem, and a second by Councilman Ferguson.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule, with various fees changed by several departments of the city, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, consideration of ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2012, 2013 operating budget. Comments, the proposed operating budget for all funds has been prepared by staff and reviewed by the city council. Approval of this ordinance adopts an operating budget for all funds beginning October 1, 2012, and ending September 30, 2013. A draft budget document is available for public view at the city secretary's office, the library, and on the city website. Staff recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance adopting fiscal year 2012, 2013 operating budget. Councilman Guarina?
I move to approve as presented, but also want to let citizens know, if they're listening, that all the next, this one and the next few items stem from our budget retreat that we had last month, tidying up what needs to be done here.
We have a motion by Councilman Guarina. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Deputy Mayor Protem. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, adopting and approving a budget for the city of Louisville, Texas, for the year beginning October 1, 2012, and ending September 30, 2013, providing for an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, consideration of a vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2012, 2013 proposed budget. Comments are, the local government code, Section 102.007(c) requires the adoption of a budget that will raise more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year. Also requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. The fiscal year 2012, 13 budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $779,299. Includes general, TIF, TIRS number two, and debt service funds. Recommendation is that the city council ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2012, 13 proposed budget. Councilman Gilmore?
And just so we're clear, this tax rate is the same. We have not increased the tax rate. However, year over year, when we add new properties, when new buildings come online and are taxable, that increases the total tax base. So if your rate is the same and you have more taxable property, we actually make a little bit more money for the city going forward. Just make sure you all are very, very clear, as politicians up here at the front of the room want to make sure also, we're keeping your rate the same. With that, I would go ahead and move to approve as written.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Gilmore, a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, consideration of ordinance amending the fiscal year 2011, 12 adopted budget. Is that supposed to be 11 or 12?
Yeah, these are the supplemental appropriations, carrying over POs for the most part, yeah.
The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the fiscal year 2011, 12 adopted budget to include all supplements and changes approved by council throughout the year. A large percentage of these appropriations include the routine supplement completed each year for prior-year encumbrances, purchases that overlap into the next fiscal year. Others relate to actions taken to fund unbudgeted items during the year. This ordinance will also authorize one new supplement to the utility fund to cover electricity and raw water costs. New revenue will more than offset the increase in expense. Recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance amending fiscal year 2011, 12 adopted budget. Councilman Ferguson?
I move to approve the ordinance amending the FY 2011, 2012 adopted budget.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Ferguson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. All those, counselor?
This is, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the previously adopted and approved budget ordinance for the fiscal year October 1, 2011 to September 30, 2012, by providing supplemental appropriations to the various funds, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, consideration of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2012, 2013 tax rate. This action will adopt the city's annual ad lorm tax rate for all taxable property This action will adopt the city's annual ad lorum tax rate for all taxable property at .44021 dollars per $100 of assessed valuation. The rate combines the following, M&amp;O .32289 dollars and principal interest on debt .11732 dollars for a total rate of .44021 dollars. While the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2012, 13 is the same as the 2011, 2012 tax rate of .44021 dollars, the proposed tax rate exceeds the effective rate of .436777 dollars. Therefore, specific language is required in the ordinance. The vote on this ordinance must be a record vote and the motion to adopt the ordinance must be made in the following form. Quote, "I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .44021 dollars, which is effectively a .786% increase in the tax rate," close quote. Recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2012, 2013 tax rate with the following motion, same motion that was listed above. Councilman Ferguson.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .44021 dollars, which is effectively a .786% increase in the tax rate.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Vaughn.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, establishing the tax rate and tax levy for the city of Louisville, Texas, for the year 2012, 2013 upon all taxable property in said city in conformity with the laws of the state of Texas and the charter provisions and all ordinances of said city, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, what question, go ahead.
Just a comment, I'd like for the city manager to explain that this is actually the same tax rate citizens are paying now.
Yeah, you're adopting the same tax rate that we've had, that we had last year, which is .44021. This particular item is a nuance of the truth and taxation statutes from Austin in that it requires us to calculate what is known as the effective tax rate. When we calculate that effective tax rate, which presumably is going to produce the same amount of revenue next year on the same property, properties that existed last year, it results in a slightly lower rate, but with the addition of new properties, it produces additional revenue. And so that's why you did the item beforehand and that's why it's a slightly higher increase in the effective or over and beyond the effective tax rate. Still the same rate.
I will add to that, if your property value went up, your taxes will go up. If your property value went down, your taxes will go down. So. We have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, consideration of a variance to the Louisville City Code, Chapter 11, signs regarding temporary marketing and directional signs related to the 2012 Western Days Festival and a consideration of a temporary road closures on Mill Street. Comments, staff has requested a variance to the, to allow temporary marketing to directional signs in connection with the 2012 Western Days Festival. Promotional signs will be placed in various locations in Old Town and at Memorial Park. Directional signs will be placed at and leading to public parking in Old Town and remote shuttle parking lots at Vista Ridge Village Shopping Center, A-Train Old Town Station, and A-Train Hebron Station. Staff has also requested an earlier temporary road closure for Mill Street than approved in previous years due to the relocation of the festival main stage. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance requested and roads, road closure as set forth in the caption above. Deputy Mayor Protam?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this item as stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Protam and a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion?
Council, just to make sure that you understand that last sentence in the comments, the stage this year is going to be located still at approximately the same location at Church and Mill, but is going to be facing south toward, facing south on Mill basically instead of facing west on Church. So that's the reason for the change up on Mill Street. This will be different than last year obviously or any prior years and we'll see how that works, but that was a recommendation made by the event coordinator, Jerry Thompson, so.
Get the sun out of their face.
Yeah, that's the good thing is that they're not facing directly into that setting sun.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Reports, Nika? I've got to ask, Dean, Dean says this is part of the deal. Can you know what the question is? Go ahead.
4.5 feet low.
Okay, still low. It was nice this weekend having the, just a little bit of druriness out there.
A little bit, not, not.
Hey, CM?
Mayor and council, this next weekend, next week, not this Saturday, but the next, will be our annual Western Days event, Friday and Saturday. And Friday, our headliner is Randy Rogers. The performance or that Western Day on Friday is from 7:00 to 11:30. On Saturday, the event runs from 10:00 to 11:30 and Josh Abbott is our headliner. Tickets are available at www.lewistvillewesterndays.com. If you go to that website and print off your tickets, you can bring that ticket with you and entrance into the event is at no cost. If you show up at the event without a ticket, then it is a cost of $20. So we do encourage you to print off your tickets and print a lot of tickets, they are free when you do that.
Okay, thank you.
Donna, can I ask a question? How many people roughly show up without tickets and have to pay their entrance fee?
We, we bring in between 12,000 and 15,000 every year because people don't show up with a ticket. So we do encourage you to, to get your tickets.
No, 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 no.
12 and 15.
You said 12 or 15,000?
12 to $15,000 is what we bring in annually.
Oh, dollars, okay, I thought you meant people.
No, 12 to $15,000, I probably didn't say that clearly. And with people who fail to bring in their tickets.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Garina?
Just want to encourage people to come to Western Days, it's that Friday, Saturday, Friday the 28th and Saturday the 29th. That was the only thing you didn't mention and it's going to be a lot of fun, please come.
Councilman Gilmore?
I'd like to take a moment to reach out to our Louisville High School family. For those of you who know, the journalism instructor over there, Mr. Corey Hale, he's won several different awards and his kids have won a lot of different journalism awards over the years. He's very highly respected. He had some medical complications here a few weeks back and he's going to be missing two to three months worth of school. It was a pretty close call for those of you who know Mr. Hale. LHS is having an open house on October 9th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. They're having a spaghetti dinner fundraiser for Mr. Hale. As you know, medical bills can get out of hand really, really quickly and, and he could use all the help that the community can give. So if you have a moment, reach out to LHS. I don't have any contact information here, this is relatively new announcement, but you can reach out to me, reach out to Louisville High School. The spaghetti supper is going to be $5 or donation, so as much as you can spare to help Mr. Hale and, and his family would be outstanding. And again, that'll be October 9th, 5:00 to 9:00 PM, that'll be part of the LHS open house. I think that's homecoming in that weekend as well. So please keep your thoughts and prayers for, for Mr. Hale and, and his family and let's, let's show him how big a heart Louisville has.
City manager? Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, I always have something about the MCL Grand. There is a continuing exhibit, A Land Far Away, in the main gallery. I've seen this exhibit, you really need to see it. It's amazing, the paintings are just incredible. So if you get a chance, drop by the MCL Grand, go to the gallery, take a look. There's also photographies by the members of the Visual Arts League that are in the hallway on the opposite wing of the MCL Grand, up and down the hallway, and that's a very interesting exhibit, so while you're there, take that in too. And then Visual Arts League continues, it's Friday acoustic jam series every Friday evening, 7:00 PM, that's in the gallery. So go on Friday, you get to go to the jam and see the paintings, so, and the photography exhibit. And then one that's very near and dear to me is that Louisville Lake Symphony has a performance on September 21st at 7:30 PM, that's this coming Friday, and September 23rd at 2:30 PM in the afternoon, that's Sunday. Nikita Fatinko, a longtime friend of mine, has played all over the world. He will be playing with the symphony, playing Beethoven and Mendelssohn. Little interesting note on the Mendelssohn, if you grew up watching any cartoons, I guarantee you've heard this music before, you'll recognize it as soon as you hear it. So it's, it's very, trust me, you'll know it. So, so if you get to make that concert, please join us and that's all I have.
Deputy Mayor Protam?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Next time, it's closed session. Okay. In accordance with the Texas Government Code, Chapter D, Item 1, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Number 2, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We'll go into closed session this time. We got a quorum, correct? Okay, we'll reconvene into regular session. Is any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.